Good afternoon. Welcome to the Waterloo City Council Work Session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boson.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Foyce.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Mrs. June.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda and approval of the minutes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve the agenda as proposed and approval of the minutes of the September 20th, 2021 work session.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna start out with a discussion of resolution establishing a bereavement policy for loss of pregnancy. And I think, Mr. Greider, you're gonna kick that off.
Yeah, so this is building off of the conversation that we had last time. Most bereavement policies cover the loss of immediate family members, which covers children. However, in the past, there has been a spotty record in United States court systems to recognize paid leave for families for the loss of the child due to stillbirth or miscarriage. And so, this is, this is an issue that often goes unrecognized in our society. There is still a lot of stigma that goes around this issue, and it, and it's obviously a very, very hard issue for the families that go through it. There are unfortunately, in the United States, a million pregnancies that end in loss before their full term or at birth. And so, in conversation with HR Director Dunn, I have just drawn up a resolution that would have the city, for city employees, recognize that our immediate family bereavement policy does extend to both parents for the loss of a pregnancy. And it does so at an appropriate time. So this is not opening contracts, this is not changing anything that has already been agreed to, this is at the appropriate time, as well as asking HR to draft that language 'cause, 'cause they're the experts, not me, and also to just notify city staff at, at the appropriate time when it, when it goes into effect for, for those employees. Hopefully, we don't have anyone who needs to use this leave, that is, that is my fervent hope. However, I do know that unfortunately, it does happen in some circumstances, and so this resolution just calls for us to be open and honest with our employees and, and offer that avenue for families in their time of grief.
As part of the bereavement.
As part of the bereavement policy that we, that we have it, simply just encompassing a little bit further. And hopefully, we can, we can, through our actions, shed more light on this issue, and hopefully, other employers can think about this policy as well. But this one just covers city employees and, and giving them time to grieve under our bereavement policy for these situations.
Questions from council?
Here.
Yes.
Mr. Greider, is that, is there any differentiation between trimesters? Because a lot of times in the first trimester, people don't even realize they're pregnant.
Right, so, there isn't. So in those circumstances, I, I believe it would, it would be a conversation that would be had. But pregnancy loss is pregnancy loss, and now if, if a person did not know, that would be something that they would probably want to have discussions on. But, but this policy, and, and that might be something that Mr. Dunn, who has more expertise on HR, could, could further elaborate. I didn't, because I'm not an expert on, on HR policy, so I wanted to leave it, provide a general guideline, and leave it up to the experts to craft policy.
Okay. Lance Dunn, HR Director. Just to kinda shed some light on that, we were looking at, to your question, Councilman Boson, we're looking at at least having some sort of documentation from a doctor, just, you know, in, in a situation like that, they probably wouldn't be any issue of getting documentation from the doctor that they had a pregnancy loss. Those are things that we're looking into. It'd be, it's a very simple process to include that into our bereavement policy right now. We would probably have to, if we wanna get, talk about having it into the contracts, that's gonna take a little bit more time, but we can, we can do something immediately for the non-bargaining agreement.
So at this point, this would cover all non-contract personnel.
Correct, correct, 'cause that, we can do that instantaneously systematically.
And then we could immediately have a conversation with the unions?
We could have, we, yeah, we would have to have a discussion to, to see if we can, they'd have to be a memorandum of understanding to include in a contract that's already been settled, but that conversation can, can take place.
Okay. Because one of the reasons I ask is, is like I say, some really early on.
Yeah.
Are, are very, they're not as, as, health-wise as traumatic as, as.
And couldn't we write the resolution such that, that the, the, the mother had to be aware of the pregnancy?
That, that, I, I don't know. I, I, I just ask the question, because like I say, in the first couple of weeks.
Will you consider that, Mr. Dunn?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're open to however you would like to word it.
Have you looked at what other cities have done with this policy?
Not with pre, loss of pregnancy. It's very rare that a loss of pregnancy has been in, in bereavement policies, but it is something that has been brought up from my research that a lot of places are trying to implement that.
We had a recent, recently, we had an employee that went through this situation. Did we cover a loss of, of work during that time? Either through FMLA or?
Yeah, if something like that happens, that's, that's, usually, if, if it, usually that would qualify for FMLA, depending on the circumstance.
And is that what happened recently?
Um, I'm not familiar with the recent one, but if that was the case, it would be covered under FMLA leave. Their job would be protected.
Well, it was just within the last couple of months, so.
So, yeah, that, that, something like that, without knowing all the details, something like that should be covered under Family Medical Leave Act.
Okay.
No, I don't see where it would be difficult, if, if, the, the understanding with the unions, but if you look at the contracts, their agreement policy is different.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yes.
All of them are.
And that's why I wrote it in the way that I did, because I wanna give Mr. Dunn, who's done that work with them, to know how to parse it. I didn't wanna come down and say, this is the exact wording you have to put in there, 'cause he, he is the person that we hired to run HR. So, yes, and that's why I utilized the phrase "appropriate time," so that when that happens, it happens.
Yeah, each, each contract is different, and we will be able to incorporate it accordingly to that contract.
Or, again, it is covered under FMLA.
It's covered now under FMLA, so.
So this is extending another benefit.
As far as being able to receive pay.
Yeah.
Right now, it's covered, FMLA basically protects your job if you're out and you have to be gone.
But it doesn't pay.
It, it doesn't pay at this time, so this would provide them with another option of pay. Employees are able to utilize any PTO, pay time off, they have, if they choose to do so, but this would be another form that would cover.
Other questions? Be there? Yes.
So, so like I say, some of them are three days, some are four days, but then after that, if, if the mother was having more complications, that would fall in the sick time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted it to be just a, the umbrella of, of bereavement leave to extend over that particular circumstance, but yes, if it's three or four, then they would have to talk to HR about their other options, based on contracts or non-contracts, things like that.
Other questions?
We have a chair.
Yes, Mr. Morrissey.
Councilman Greider, should this be more specific, so that it points out some of the fine points, such as this includes fathers, mothers, rather than just parents, or does, is it gonna extend farther into siblings? And what about same-sex couples? And if one of them chooses to become pregnant, should that not be addressed in this, so that it's all-inclusive?
My understanding, in the way that I wrote it, and Mr. Dunn, if, if I wasn't clear, I'm more than willing to make changes. The reasons that I used the, the parent language, which is more gender-neutral, would be to, to cover same-sex couples that we might have here, here in our city staff. For me, it would cover both, both of the parents, who are probably the folks who, and not to diminish anyone's pain or grief, but the folks most impacted by this, so I was just extending it to both parents.
What about surrogates?
I would, I would consider surrogates within that parent struc, within that parent structure. Obviously, things are a little bit more complicated than they have been, but my understanding was to extend it to fathers, mothers, and those folks who are, who are immediately involved in the, in the birth, so, so the parent, the parental units, however we might define those. And I, I didn't want to step on toes again with HR policy, 'cause I'm sure there are lots of definitions and, and terminology that you folks use, so that's why I used the umbrella term "parents" as a, an inclusive way to, to include the folks who are most immediately impacted. Again, not diminishing anyone's grief, but the folks who, who might feel it the most.
Any other questions, Mr. Morrissey?
Well, just as a follow-up, yeah. Councilman Greider, you, you know, I support this whole concept, but a, as we've seen in modern times, people can take a very good concept like this, and they can turn it on its head, turn it into something that it's not. So, I just want to raise those kinda issues, 'cause there are other ones, but I'm not gonna bring them up now, 'cause we don't need to get in a debate right now, but I would just like to make sure that the language is as inclusive as possible when it comes down to developing this language.
Yeah, and, I mean, that's something that, again, your input is welcome on that, as far as being as specific as you need, because, I mean, I have things that I could come up with that could, you know, think that they may need to be more specific as well, so. But yeah, feel free to provide any feedback, feedback input you got on that, and, you know, we are pretty free to be able to include it how we want to, so.
Any other questions? Pardon? Oh, yeah.
Yep.
And, and it, I think our direction to you, Mr. Dunn, is to draft something. My personal opinion is to just do it at this point with the, the non-union staff, and then we, as a council, could decide whether it is something that we want you to take, ensure there are negotiations with contract employees. I also personally would like you to consider including surrogates, and would like you to, um, it, consider how to word it, I'm not sure, but if the, the mother is not aware of the pregnancy and is not under the care of a doctor, I don't think that's appropriate. You know, as, as Mr. Boson said, they could have a miscarriage before they even knew they were pregnant, and I don't think that's what we're talking about.
Right, and that's one that I had mentioned before, a little bit about documentation and doctors.
Does anybody disagree with the direction I just passed along to Mr. Dunn?
Again, the.
We'll see.
We'll see, okay. Stay tuned.
The way I wrote it was, I wanted it to be as inclusive to all the different types of families we have, while recognizing that folks in these trying times need a little bit extra, so. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Dunn, for all your help, and I look forward to seeing what you.
Any questions that you have, Mr. Dunn? What we're asking you to come up with?
Not at this time. I'll, I'll, I got some, a few references and resources to look at, so we'll have some stuff to go off of.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next on our agenda is not until 4:10, since we said approximately, is it okay, Leanne, if we start? Okay.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, yes.
I, I need to go get Chris, 'cause this computer, this thing that I got, just is.
Is not working? Okay, we can wait until.
I gotta go.
He should be in his office, let's hope. Hope so. Okay, next on the agenda is Department Operations update from the Library in Culture and Arts, and we'll start out with Jillian.
Yes.
Interim Library Director, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Like Sharon said, my name is Jillian Rutledge, I'm the interim Library Director, and I'm here to talk to you today about all of the great things that we've been doing over this past year. Just to start, the mission of the Waterloo Public Library is to provide free access to information, education, recreation, in a welcoming environment. So although the library was closed for the majority of fiscal year 21, we still managed to maintain more than 35,000 cardholders. We also checked out more than 108,000 physical items and almost 48,000 digital items. Library staff delivered 1,080 materials to homebound patrons throughout Waterloo and answered more than 42,000 reference questions. We also provided more than 24,000 computer and Wi-Fi sessions and had almost 4,000 attendees at our programs. Some of the highlights over the past year, and I feel bad that I didn't include any pictures, 'cause I wanted to have enough text done here to follow, but the installation of our award-winning digital sign. So it is located on the corner of Commercial Street and Park Avenue, and it's comprised of a stack of books with a book on top, and it keeps the patrons and visitors to our community up to date with special library events, programs, services, as well as a current time, temperature, and date. It's also kinda become a fixture for those visiting to take a picture and post it on social media, so if you haven't seen it, please drive by and check it out. One benefit of being close to the public was the opportunity to inventory our entire collection of more than 95,000 items. So this process entailed hand-scanning every single item that we have in our collection, and that allowed us to find misplaced and lost items. We also conducted an audit of the library's print collection to determine how many books we have that feature diverse characters or that were written by diverse authors. So using the information that we found, we plan to update our collection development policies and, or purchasing practices to better reflect the diverse community that we serve. After many, many months of planning, testing, and designing, we also launched our new website just this last month. We wanted to ensure that the visitors to our digital branch had access to the library's resources and services 24/7/365. So if you've not had a chance to check it out yet, please do visit www.waterlupubliclibrary.org. Like many of the other city departments, we partnered with students from the University of Iowa on two different projects. A marketing campaign for the business and entrepreneurial resources that we have available at the library, as well as a digital map of our cardholders to identify areas in need of targeted outreach or marketing. What we found is that our 35,000 cardholders are pretty evenly distributed across the community, which is good news, but we continue to do ongoing community outreach to reach members that might not be aware of the resources that the library offers. At the beginning of the summer, our staff brought a little free library to Lincoln Elementary, which distributed more than 1,000 free books to students. So we're very fortunate to be able to spread the love of books and readings with so many children in our community. And then another fun project that we've started is our bi-weekly podcast, which brings together library staff as well as community members to talk about books, movies, programs, events, and more. So you can stream the audio wherever you find podcasts, or watch the recordings on the city's YouTube page. When the library closed on March 17th, 2020, we immediately went into pivot mode in order to determine how to best continue offering services and materials to the community in a safe and effective manner. We immediately implemented digital library cards that patrons could apply for online, so that they could continue to receive access to our vast collection of databases, as well as digital downloadable books and audiobooks and magazines. We also began offering a variety of virtual programs for patrons of all ages, including storytimes, craft videos, and educational programs. Recent census data shows that 2020, sorry, 22% of Waterloo residents do not have access to reliable high-speed internet, and many of our patrons pre-COVID would come into the library solely to use the library's computers to check email, apply for jobs, and then stay in touch with friends and family. So to help bridge this digital divide while we were closed, we began operating, offering circulating hotspots to checkout. They, we also increased our Wi-Fi reach to extend all the way to include the River Loop Expo Plaza. So these services continue to be in really high demand, and we actually just recently purchased additional hotspots to add to the collection. Curbside pickup has become a standard in many industries, including restaurants and retail, and so throughout our closure, we did continue to provide services and access to our physical collection through curbside pickup. As the previous slide showed, we checked out more than 100,000 items during the last fiscal year, many of those which were done through curbside. Many of our patrons did, however, miss the ability to come in and browse the collection, and so we implemented a new service that we called Shelf Service, where patrons could fill out a form online to receive personalized recommendations from library staff for materials that they could then borrow through curbside. Once it was deemed to, deemed safe to allow patrons back into the building, we began offering services by appointment. This included computer use, notary appointments, as well as browsing. So we're really happy to be back to kind of a more normal level of service. We currently don't have any time or capacity limitations in the building, and we are seeing our door count continue to go up and up. So all of these services that we offered while we were closed have been really well-received by the public and continue to still be offered, even though we are back open. Some of our program highlights, as I touched on the last slide, we began offering a variety of digital programs while we were closed, and then also, we were still able to provide our summer library programs to all ages. We did that by providing a combination of virtual, as well as utilizing the great downtown spaces that we have, so the River Loop Amphitheater and Expo Plaza were instrumental in, in both of those. We also used the library's courtyard. Patrons were also offered self-paced programs that they could participate in, including story walks at Washington Park, an online winter reading challenge, scavenger hunts, and staycation packages during spring break, which offered bundles of books, magazines, movies, and more from around the world. Other program highlights include the very popular Choose Your Own Adventure Book Club for middle-aged, middle-school-aged children, as well as an all acts, or all-ages virtual coding club. So we're really excited to be back to be offering in-person programs, including the ongoing retirement series with Mike Finley, and we're looking forward to offering in-person programs for families and children very soon. So some of our building updates and improvements, we installed a new flagpole and an eight-foot-by-five-foot foot flag in our courtyard. We also redid our second-floor shelving end panels. We installed a new door counter software, which, although not the most exciting, it does provide us with really accurate, up-to-date, hour-by-hour foot traffic information, and as well as the ability to display our capacity and our occupancy levels in the building. We also purchased new computers for our teen area, and then the facade was tuck-pointed, cleaned, and sealed. So currently, the street and the sidewalk in front of the library are being redone, but once complete, we will begin our landscaping project to really tie everything in together. So our new flowerbeds up front were installed when the library's front steps were redone back in late 2019, early 2020, which seems like a really, really long time ago. One of the most exciting things I think we've been doing over the past year, in July 2020, we created Diversity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee, which has been instrumental in continuing the important work of making our services and collections better reflective of the community's diverse population. One of the initiatives that has come out of this has been the Librarian's Guide to Homelessness, which is a comprehensive training that, on how to best serve patrons who are experiencing not only housing insecurity, but also a variety of other traumas and challenges. This training emphasizes an empathy-driven approach, which was particularly helpful during the public health crisis. Another task that the committee's been working on is reviewing and updating our policies and internal procedures to make those more equitable and inclusive. Some of the challenge, or some of the changes that have come out of this work include a new library card type that we offer to patrons that aren't able to provide proof of address or current ID. We also are now allowing up to five interlibrary loan requests for free each month. And then just recently, the library became the 18th organization in the Cedar Valley to become a dementia-friendly organization, so we had trainers come in and do a presentation and then hand-on, hands-on exercise for that. We also have a, published a statement on our website that reads, "Diversity, inclusion, and belonging are core values of our organization, and we condemn racism, xenophobia, violence, hatred, intolerance, and prejudice of any kind. We respect all people's rights, dignity, and feelings, and strive to recognize the burdens and barriers Black, Indigenous, and people of color in particular face. Through our mission, we aim to provide the highest level of service to all of our patrons through diversity and inclusion-informed decision-making in our planning, policies, programs, and collections. We are committed to learning and working with our community partners, addressing our community's needs, and providing equitable access, inclusion, and belonging." As previously mentioned, we also conducted that audit of our print and digital collections, and will continue to make purchasing and collection management decisions with, with a focus on diverse materials. And then lastly, several of our staff presented a webinar through the state library that was titled "An Empathy-Driven Response to COVID-Related Behavior." So even with all of the challenges that we faced over 2020, we still have made, continued to make good progress towards our strategic plan. To support our goal of community engagement and service production, or sorry, service promotion, the library had representation at a variety of community events, including National Night Out, Farmer's Markets, Irish Fest, and Pride Fest, My Waterloo Days, as well as RagBri, which utilized. which utilizes the library's meeting room space as the downtown first aid station. We had riders from all across the country enjoying the library's air conditioning, computers, magazines, and comfortable seating. Under our umbrella of resource management, we've made great improvements with the new website, our collection inventory and audit, and expansion of our digital offerings. In an effort to create a more inviting space, a seldom-used computer lab on the library's second floor was recently converted into a much-needed, medium-sized meeting space for patrons. And an ongoing space needs assessment will give us direction on how to modernize and better use the library's physical space. We have a lot of great things coming up on the horizon, including passport acceptance, hiring key positions, the previously mentioned street and landscaping projects, a solar charging bench, which was just actually delivered last week, continued in-person programming, as well as our community and city partnerships. That said, we still have several items on our wish list. Our youth department is in dire need of modernization and upgrades, and a bookmobile would allow us to continue to take the library out into the community. We would happily be one of the recipients of the proposed exterior murals that are going in downtown. Solar panels on the library's roof could help offset the energy costs, which, as you can imagine, for a 65,000-square-foot building can be quite high. Upgrading meeting room space will bring nonprofit and business groups into the building. And then new carpet, while it's not the most exciting, is definitely needed. Our first-floor lobby space is overdue, not to do too many library puns, but overdue for an update, as well as our second-floor restrooms to become more ADA-accessible. And then overall, you know, we really do have a great space and a great building. You could just use a few cosmetic upgrades to really shine. And then lastly, the Waterloo Public Library is well poised to help the city of Waterloo succeed in several areas of the proposed 2030 Vision Plan. Our marketing department can help fly the W through that digital sign, podcast, and our newsletter, which is distributed to more than 23,000 members. We can also host programs, create book lists and displays, and distribute information to patrons related to housing, such as hosting the first-time homeowner's classes, which we've done in the past, as well as renters' rights classes. Our staff have always assisted patrons with job-seeking, and our databases and technology classes will continue to help support those endeavors under Waterloo Works. The power-up downtown, as I mentioned, solar panels, an electric car charging spot, and the inclusion of the library on the Arts and Cultural Trail will help the city reach this goal. And then lastly, eliminating barriers to information and connection have always been core tenets of the public library. So we're excited to continue serving the citizens of Waterloo as an invaluable community asset and appreciate the support that we've received from city council and from other city departments. So, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Great presentation. Questions, council members?
And chair?
Yes, Mr. Morrissey.
Thank you very much for stepping up.
Oh, you're welcome.
I don't know if you're going to be part of the search, or are you going to be searched for?
The latter. Yeah, the search process is ongoing, so they've started second-round interviews.
So you're in the room?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
So Jillian, I don't have any questions. I want to tell you, as someone who needs something to do with a three-year-old and a one-year-old on Saturday mornings, thank goodness you guys are open. I can also tell you that three- and one-year-olds are very much looking forward to your programming, starting back up for kids when it's safe. We really enjoyed your summer programming. My three-year-old still talks about the books that she got from the library that she got to keep, which was like Christmas of July for her. So please pass along my deep thanks to all of your staff, but especially the children's department, because they make some kids real happy.
That will make them very happy to hear as well. I know that this was a really tough year for everybody, but especially, you know, the youth department, who loves seeing those faces come in each day, so.
Mr. Mu.
Just...
I just wanted to add my kudos to Mr. Morrissey. I'm so glad you're in the running as well.
Oh, thank you.
I think your presentation works in your favor in that. This is a great presentation.
Thank you.
You know, thank you. You stepped in and done an incredible job. And in the short time I've seen the library at more places outside of the walls of the library than I've seen in a long time. So thank you so much for all your efforts. We appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
I just want to add my kudos to everyone else's. You didn't skip a beat. We lost our director, and you just jumped in and, like I said, did not skip a beat. In fact, we accomplished perhaps even more. So I thank you and again add my kudos to everyone else's. So good job.
Thank you.
Are you taking?
Yeah.
You're going to find him.
All right, Mr. Schenkel is here. Next, we have an update by the Center for Arts, Cultural and Arts.
Good afternoon. Jillian, great job. It's kind of appropriate, I think. Jillian's from the library, so hers was very text-heavy. I'm from the art museum, so...
More pictures.
Mine's mostly pictures, so. And I will confess and scold myself. I didn't follow the rules and limit myself to 10 pages, but I'll try to move through it quickly. Please bear with me. And some of this, hopefully, all of you already know, and you've heard me say it before. But there may be many people in the public that don't know who we are and what we do. And so I think it doesn't ever hurt to go back and underscore all those things. So first and foremost, we're the Cultural and Arts Department, and we operate under the auspices of the Waterloo Center for the Arts. And our department provides free and low-cost cultural opportunities and amenities to citizens of all ages. And what we do, hopefully other people agree with this, is incredibly important because we improve quality of life in the Cedar Valley. We draw visitors to Waterloo and create positive economic impacts. Our mission statement is to stimulate inquiry, provoke dialogue, and connect people through the arts. I like to put the emphasis on connecting people through the arts. And facilities, where we're at physically, we are the Waterloo Center for the Arts, which is a multi-disciplinary arts complex that includes the Phelps Youth Pavilion, the Hope Martin Theater, a theater space that seats just under 400 people, which is programmed by the Black Hawk Children's Theater and the Waterloo Community Playhouse. So throughout the year, they have alternating productions, main stage productions with children's theater programs as well. We have a series of art galleries, an array of banquet and meeting spaces, and classrooms and art studios within that facility. We are adjacent to and help program the Riverloop Amphitheater, as well as the Riverloop Expo Plaza. And some would be surprised to know that we also manage bookings at the Waterloo Boathouse. Annually, we host over 1,750 meetings and events and typically serve more than 200,000 visitors. Now, this was a little bit of a different year. I'm sure you're hearing that a lot in these presentations. And certainly, I think Jillian's department and leisure services in ours were maybe impacted in a little bit different way than some of the other departments in that we interface and serve so many people directly and typically in groups and so forth. So like the other departments, and particularly the library, we've kind of been riding the storm and trying to respond and actually have tried to rise to the challenge of new ways to connect with people and serve people in the changing environment. And some of the ways that we have done that is by increasing our online presence. Our social media engagement has gone through the roof since COVID hit. We've also... And part of the way that we did that was through new content and developing new content. Since some people often couldn't come through our doors, we developed activities that they could do at home, online resources, which we posted on our social media and then also on our website. So we have, over the course of the past year and a half, probably come up with over 200 different activities that people can access online, download, do at home. And so we're not only serving people in our area, but much beyond as well. Let's see. So we've also focused on a lot of improvements in our building and also outreach in things like public art and so forth. But back to our facility. We host a wider range of events: meetings, conferences, fundraisers, trade shows, awards, presentations, banquets, weddings. We also do celebrations of life. I didn't include that. But a wide variety of private events. So we serve as a meeting and gathering place, a community center, which is a really important part of our role in the community. We're located downtown, in the center of town, where the whole community feels comfortable. And we try to make sure that all our citizens feel comfortable and welcome there. And so we have spaces that are available that are offered at a discount to nonprofits, allowing them to hold fundraisers and meetings and so forth so that we can help support them, as well as private individuals who can rent these spaces for their private events. As an art gallery, probably people would not be surprised to know that we have exhibitions of art. We present over 20 exhibitions, changing exhibitions each year. In some years, that goes up to as many as 36, depending on the scheduling and so forth. And admission to our art galleries is always free. There is a modest charge for our youth pavilion, but people are always welcome and encouraged to visit us and stroll through our galleries and view without charge. And guided tours are available. A little plug for our current exhibition, Earthly Beauty, works by Susan Coleman and Sandra Dias. They're artists who are affiliated with Cornell College. Throughout the pandemic, we focused a lot on our permanent collections because we couldn't have artists in to do gallery talks and that sort of thing. So we focused on our collection. This is kind of turning back to feature works by individual artists. And we will be doing a virtual gallery talk for this exhibit, so we'll get some information on that. Let's see. As I mentioned, we have... We've been focusing on our permanent collection. Our museum has a really incredible permanent collection. It is presented on a rotating basis, and it includes over 7,000 objects. And I think people might be surprised to know that that collection has been built almost entirely through gifts, donations. We program heavily, and we try to network with people, scholars that study the various collections and collectors and so forth, and get our name out there. And I think we've been pretty successful in that. And so when people are looking for homes for their collections, their beloved objects, and they want to share those with people, they feel confident that we will be good stewards and that we will share them with other people. So we've been very fortunate to receive incredible support in that respect. We also do a small amount of acquisitions that are funded through individual donations. And the various collections that we have are Midwest Collection, which features works from our local area, our state, and our region. One of the highlights that we're known for is our Grant Wood and American Regionalist Masters collection. We have all 19 of the lithographs that Grant Wood completed during his lifetime. And there are only a few full sets of those. So that's kind of a rare thing. We are really known for our Haitian and Caribbean art collection. We have the largest public collection of Haitian art in the entire world. The piece that I'm showing you right now that's on the right is a beaded flag. So, and it's quite large. And it depicts the aftermath of the earthquake in 2010 in Haiti. And we just had the deja vu with another serious earthquake impacting Haiti. So in fact, this flag is being sent to Chicago, to the Haitian-American Museum of Chicago for exhibition there, along with a few other pieces as well that seek to keep Haiti and its plight in people's minds and hearts at this time. We also have an American Decorative Arts collection, which is... It includes works in a variety of media, but particularly clay. And we have works by some of the most important clay artists in our country over the past few decades. And an international folk art collection. You can see on the right some Guatemalan veepils. We have a great collection of Mexican folk art and a stellar collection of textiles overall, but with a particular emphasis in Guatemalan textiles, which are some of the finest in the world. I mentioned public art. That's something, again, that we've seen a ton of interest in public art. And we're happy to see that people in our community are appreciating and crying out for public art. So we're happy to oblige. And also, again, due to the limitations of people being able to come into our doors at some times or be able to come in large groups, focusing on public art was a way that we really could reach lots and lots of people in a very safe way. And they're not constrained by time or day, any hours, whenever it moves them. And what's something that's great about public art is a lot of times people happen on it unexpectedly. And that's just an incredible experience. We're not just reaching those people who have made a conscious decision to come in our doors and see art. We're reaching people who may not otherwise take steps to make art part of their lives. And public art contributes to place building, creating a unique and dynamic environment, manifesting local culture, building community identity, and attracting visitors. So some of the projects that we worked on over the last year or so include We Rise. It's a sculpture actually right across the street there at the Black Hawk County Courthouse. And it was done by Sarah Deppi. We worked with the 19th Amendment Committee to plan a public art project that culminated in two sculptures, one in Cedar Falls and one in Waterloo. And I always like to say we got the big one. But I do love the Cedar Falls one as well. Young Corn, the piece to the right. We've had a great... We've had a great ongoing relationship with Silos and Smoke Sacks. But in the past year or so, they've really expressed an interest in public art and being involved with public art. And we really try to leverage private support on these projects as well. And they have, in their visitor's center, they had an overhead door that opens into their exhibition area, and they wanted a mural on that. So we suggested reproducing a work from our permanent collection that fit their heritage themes. And so this is a piece by David Delafield, Young Corn, which you can now see on their overhead... The door. You can see it, I think, from West Park. And then, hopefully, you've seen these. They're a little bit hard to miss along Washington Street. We developed a mural committee that has been meeting for the last probably year and a half or so. And looking at how to structure... First of all, studying public art and mural initiatives in other communities, how they made it work, what issues they faced, and actually looking at the kind of contracts that they used and so forth, the funding models and so forth, and use that to try and work towards building our own plan. And we've identified many, many potential locations, which we've prioritized and which we keep reprioritizing based on opportunities and what other initiatives that are happening in the community and so forth. But we did identify Washington Street as an area that... community and so forth. But we did identify Washington Street as an area that had great opportunities for murals. We had some buildings that were blank canvases, and it serves as a really important gateway into our community. And we just knew it could, it could look a lot better. And so when we had the opportunity to do a partnership program with the University of Iowa, that's the project that kind of raised to the top. And so we worked with them, and reviewed a lot of proposals that were developed by their graduate students there. And ended up selecting Sean Elizabeth Tyler for this project. And in looking at her proposal, we decided that it needed to be bigger. And because you can, we needed to be able to like have a great presence as people are driving down the freeway, and passing from a distance and moving fast. So we decided to double the project and add a second building. So these are on Washington Street between like the, near Fifth Street and Sixth Street. They span a couple of blocks. And one of the things that we were in discussions with the students about the artists was kind of the change that has happened in that area, urban renewal. And these buildings could potentially change down the road as well, because it's in an area that's prime for development and so forth. And rather than literally attack that idea, this artist brought that in. She shared an anecdote about one of the first experiences she had in our state that really moved her was moving into a, walking into a field of yellow, golden rod. And just, that really moved her. And so the idea of pollinators and things that support change and so forth resonated with her. And so she brought that as the subject matter to represent the change and these insects moving to move change forward and so forth. Kind of a whimsical public art project that we did to try and engage people was our Musical Masterpieces project, where we partnered with artists and had them paint pianos, and then placed them around on the streets downtown with various businesses hosting those. And another project that was a cooperation with Silos and Smokestacks, the Prairie Crossing murals that graced this building, also on Washington Street near West Fourth, had faded a lot over the years. And they were due to be refreshed. They had, the project had initially been funded by Silos and Smokestacks, although over the years, they'd forgotten that. But as we started talking again, we reminded them of that, and they came forward and said they would like to fund refreshing this, which they did. So the artist, which is Sean Page, he redeveloped it because over time, the location, the site had changed somewhat. Originally, there were two more murals on the adjacent building, which had gone some renovations, some renovations, which necessitated removing those. So it was redesigned for the remaining space. And so that's something that we did accomplish this year. Also, in time for RagBri, we commissioned an artist, Victoria Reed, to create these recycled bicycle arches. And this was a project that was supported by the Cedar Valley Bike Collective. They collected lots of bikes and shared those with us and with the artist to make these. And they were, the project was also supported by Cedar Valley Trails Partnership. And these were erected. And a great thank you to the Streets Department for helping us pull this off. We couldn't have done that without them. But yeah, these went up moments before the RagBri riders came in. And it was really fun to see them, the riders posing, holding up their bikes like they were arches and taking selfies and so forth. And this, and these will be installed on our bike trails around the downtown area permanently. The artist actually is making two more. We'd originally commissioned her for four. She said, I've already got two more almost done. So let's just go ahead and throw those in. So those will be forthcoming. Programs and experiences, we provide a wide range of programs for all ages. Our Phelps Youth Pavilion, a hands-on, interactive, experiential gallery for children and families. It's, we try to really focus on lifelong learning and experiences in the arts. And kind of the youth pavilion is kind of the jewel in that. It was closed through a good share of the FY21 year. However, we were really excited to be able to open again in the spring. We are up and running. We do have slightly reduced hours, and we have the, we're operating it with specific shifts and limits of the number of people to keep things safe. And between each shift, people might be interested to know, all of the tangible hands-on items are removed from the galleries, and they're replaced with other ones, and then everything sanitized. So and at any rate, it's three spaces, two floors, dozens and dozens of hands-on activities, all based around arts and cultural themes. And there's plenty to read, but kids don't need to read in order to be able to do any of the activities. Many of them relate to our permanent collection. And during the time that we couldn't have visitors, we took advantage of that, that time to be able to make improvements to our Phelps Youth Pavilion. So virtually, every wall in the youth pavilion has been repainted, as well as many others in the building. And many of the exhibits had been in place for, since the opening of the youth pavilion in 2008. So those that were not quite as popular as others, we pulled those out and developed, using our own staff, developed new exhibits and constructed those and put those in place. Some of those that were, that were in poor repair, were either repaired or changed out as well. So it really is very fresh and new. And you can see, the Dinosaur Ruckus is an exhibit that we had built just before we closed down for COVID. So when we reopened, we still, we had a brand new exhibit up and ready to go. So that's there for people to, for kids to enjoy. And then down below, you can see the Tap Tap, which got a total new paint job. So our Caribbean area is really festive and fresh and new now. Actually, it's also important for us to make sure that we try to remove as much as possible all barriers to participation. So if you were, I think you were all here the other night for the Museums for All proclamation. We're excited about this new program that we are, have signed on to with other local museums. So anybody that has an EBT, an electronic benefits card, can get a $2 admission to our youth pavilion. We give special discounts to Blue Star families. We currently are not doing Dollar Days or Super Saver Sundays, but once we are able to, we'll reinstate those programs so that once a month, families can come for just a dollar per person, and also on Sundays for a discounted rate. And this year, new, we have a new sponsor for our bus sponsorships. The Guernsey charitable foundation has started a Guernsey Gas to Go program. So school tours can visit the youth pavilion, and they will cover the cost of the busing costs. Additional programs and experiences, let's see, going back. There we go. Classes and workshops. Wide variety of classes and workshops for all ages. Ceramics is very, very popular. Stained Glass is a class that's been very, very popular for adults. Basket weaving, just about anything you can think of. We have also, through COVID, although we were shut down for about two and a half months, we reinstated classes shortly thereafter with masking and with smaller groups. So we've been able to continue our educational arts programs throughout, although with some smaller numbers. And again, try to address potential barriers to participation. We participate in Operation Threshold's Key Card Program. We offer tuition scholarships for those who can't afford to take our classes otherwise. And our Friends of the Art Center offers two $1,000 scholarships to graduating seniors who are going into the arts to help support our students as well. And, and again, also during COVID, we tried to come up with creative ways to engage people that might not want to take a class. And so we did several different art hunts throughout the community. One of them was wild birds that were made from clay and installed around the Green Belt Trail. And that ended up moving to a number of different places. One was tree faces. So our staff made faces out of clay that mounted on trees. And people had to go out to Hartman Reserve and identify the kind of tree that they were on and so forth. We provided sidewalk chalk to people early on in the pandemic, so that they could express themselves on the trails and in their neighborhoods and on their driveways and so forth. So again, just tried to rise to the challenge and find new ways to connect with people. Outreach, like, like the library, we try to get out there and see people outside of our walls. We do artist residencies. This past year, we partnered with the schools to bring in Todd Green, a musician who played a myriad of instruments from all over the world. He did a concert, and that was broadcast on cable television and is available to the schools as well. We are active with the Waterloo Urban Farmers Market, and we do kids' activities out there on a weekly basis. We provide activities for My Waterloo Days, the Gallagher-Brewdorn Neighborhood Concert Series, RagBri Irish Fest, Cedar Valley Pride Fest, and most recently, the Oktoberfest. You can see some of the painted pumpkins from that workshop there. We put on and partner to present a myriad of festivals throughout the summer. And these include Culture Fest. We were not able to do that festival this past year, but we hope to be able to resurrect that next year. Our Fiesta, Celebration of Latino Culture, that one we were able to present this year, Cedar Valley Stemmenstein, and our upcoming Holiday Arts Festival. We were partners with the presentation of the Red, White, and Blue Fireworks Celebration with RagBri, and most recently, the new Waterloo Food Truck Festival, which was successful beyond any of our dreams. There were over seven thousand people who turned out for that. Just take the opportunity to plug a few upcoming events. We have the Native Pride Dancers, a Native American dance group that's coming on the seventh of this month. That's in conjunction with the Waterloo Community Schools. On the ninth, we will have a film premiere by a local filmmaker, Carson Morrissey, who was the winner of the Spark event, Spark Waterloo event at the amphitheater. He is a local filmmaker, and his newest film is going to be premiered at the center. On the 28th, we have our ever-popular Trick or Treat event. To tie into our Dinosaur Ruckus exhibit, it's the Trick or Treat this year. We're partnering with the Cedar Valley Chamber Music Group for, to bring in the Dolly Quartet on the sixth of November, and our Holiday Arts Festival on the 13th and 14th of November. And just kind of a look at our budget performance over last year. And again, bear in mind, it was a very odd year. But our expenses were just over a million. That was seventy-seven percent of what was approved. Our revenues, obviously, were down. And at a hundred and seventy, just under $175,000, that was forty-one percent of projected. And our tax support came in at $892,000, at ninety-three percent of what was approved. And additional revenues, that's our city budget. We do have our Friends of the Art Center, a arts, a membership and fundraising support group that do raise additional funds that support programs and pay for things that are needs outside of our city budget as well. So some special programs and a lot of the public art projects and so forth are funded wholly or in part by Friends of the Art Center. And they raised $31,944 last year. And that's even without their major fundraiser. Usually, that's the $50,000 range. We have endowments at the community foundation, and those generated revenues of $284,000 last year. And the River Loop Association is a nonprofit that manages the River Loop Amphitheater in Expo Plaza, and managed the liquor licenses and so forth. And they brought in $22,818 last year in revenues. And again, that's much below what they typically do. So we look forward to that really turning around this year, particularly with having had a very successful festival season this year. At any rate, that's kind of an overview, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, Kent, I was just wondering, the front of the Center for the Arts is not looking too good. You know, the concrete and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I meant to mention that at the very beginning, I included a photo of our entrance, and it doesn't look like that at all anymore. It hasn't for quite some time, which is a good thing and it's a bad thing. It certainly isn't pretty, but progress is exciting. It's been a little slow progress this summer due to challenges that the contractor has had with the stairs. After several attempts, we're pleased to report that the stairs have passed inspection. And so they're able to move on. Before the snow flies, they will, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks or so, they plan to pour a new walkway to our main entrance, so that we'll be able to reopen the main entrance. And then they'll move over and start doing construction just to the west of that, and close that temporary entrance. They're also moving to the east, and will be doing additional construction over there. So when this is all said and done and all over, we will have a beautiful new plaza entry, which is, which was much overdue. It was in very poor shape. So it's, it's, it's worth a little bit of the journey and a little pain to get to where we needed to be. But we'll have a brand-new, beautiful, safe new entry. And we will also have much increased parking capacity as well.
And Kent, well, there, do you have a rendering, an artist's rendering of what it will look like?
I do.
If you do, could you send that to us?
I can certainly do that.
Yeah, I know you've gone through, you've been very patient. I think we had to go through several contractors, and then on the third time, we got your steps. When are they going to be starting the parking lots?
Actually, as soon as they can get a, the contractor can come in and pour a new, a temporary walkway to the main entrance.
Then we can start on the parking lots?
Right, that, yeah.
Are we gonna, I was so sorry that we had to miss our, had to lose our rock fountain. Are we gonna get a fountain back?
We, the, the plans do not include a fountain. We did keep some of those boulders to be incorporated into the new entry landscape. And I'll send you some renderings of that, so you can see that. You know, fountains in our part of the country are pretty challenging in terms of maintenance and so forth. And beyond that as well, you know, the, the fountain was kind of a second generation of an earlier fountain, which was problematic in and of itself. And so they, they kind of redesigned it and relocated it. And while it was beautiful, it also served as a significant barrier to patrons coming. You know, our largest share of our parking was on the other side of this berm, this, this small pillar mountain that everybody had to go around. It also really very much decreased the visibility of the entrance. We had a very hidden entrance. And, you know, you don't, you don't want to have, be hidden from your visitors and make handicapped people have to, you know, go around. So it will be much, a much more visible, accessible entrance. Again, we'll have more parking capacity. And, you know, we think it will be lovely. It will, it will also incorporate a new musical instrument park into the entry plaza area as well, so that we can kind of flow the, the arts, the cultural education experiences, the kinds of things that we do inside our doors, outside as people enter as well. So we're really excited about that. And we have been putting together some preliminary plans for a sculptural canopy element that is kind of inspired by the amphitheater canopy, something that would really read Something that would really read from the street as something exciting and clearly that this is a cultural destination. So people, rather than a sign that says arts, a piece of art that would really draw people in and serve as an icon for our community and its commitment to the arts.
Well, and I want to add to my comments to commend you and the staff. Anybody that says there is nothing going on in Waterloo, obviously has not checked your schedule. You have brought so many events and are involved in so many activities. I thank all of you. It's really a great addition to our community. I also am a big fan of public art and what you've added has just been phenomenal. I should say that I love the murals that you painted there on Washington. They're just uplifting and they're so bright and happy. But did you mention and did I miss the, the river art that the artists, young artists have painted along the back?
The youth art team?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I didn't touch on that because that was the year before, but it's.
But it was repainted by volunteers this year, was it not?
Yes, it's along the river wall. We have a really incredible piece of public art. It's entitled Our Freedom Story and it was created by youth art team. And the whole thing came about because Chuck Pearson was putting together a civil rights tour of civil rights sites in Waterloo. And he wanted to have them meet at our location and wondered if we had anything, you know, to show or or tell that that related to Waterloo's civil rights history. And I said, well, in fact, our Phelps Youth Pavilion, the history of the, of the formation of that was as a response to the race riots in 68. And the Waterloo Center for the Arts and the schools coming together to try to develop, to address that by developing a program where kids would come together, have a, a shared cultural experience, kids from two different schools on two different sides of the river, and they'd come together, learn about another culture together and do a related craft activity. So hopefully learn to respect other cultures and each other. And so we decided that we would work with the youth art team to take that further and turn it into a public art piece so that, the other part of it was, at the time that they were going to gather for that tour, our youth pavilion wasn't open. So we said, oh, it'd be great to have something outside that people could come to at any time and learn about this. So the kids, they, they interviewed people who lived through that and have have worked to move civil rights forward in our community then and ever since. And they distilled that into this incredible dynamic mural. And so that's on the river wall there. We did have an instance earlier this summer where it was vandalized. And we were planning to put together a staff paint day to repair it. But before we could even do that, before the weather could warm up enough to do that, the community activated and said, we want to show up, we want to help, we want to repair the mural. So that was incredible to see that it was embraced like that. And that project is going to have another life. We're working with the Cedar Valley Sportsplex. And we will be doing murals on some of the walls, excuse me, that are drawn from that project so that it can increase the visibility and share the story even further beyond that location.
Again, I commend you and your staff and the volunteers. Great work. Good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So Kent, I don't have a question. I will say, serving as the liaison to the Arts and Culture Committee, I, I am just really impressed with all that you all are doing. I do want to extend my thanks to you and your staff. One, for the summer, working with Leader Services and myself to get accessible bathrooms near Marx Park. I know that's not wholly within your purview, but it's in the Expo Plaza and I know that you guys were really helpful in that. So thank you for that. And also as someone who has a three-year-old and a one-year-old, I'm very glad that the youth pavilion is back open. And if you could also extend my thanks to your staff, especially the youth pavilion staff. I know there are some children who really, really love going there.
I will definitely do that. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor. Kent, a couple of questions. First of all, the youth art team, Sharon had mentioned them and you talked about them. But are, are you involved with making sure that the canopy bridge, all those youth art depictions that they put up inside there, I don't think that's completed yet, is it?
It is not completed. That, that is a project that has been kind of extending over a series of summers. They typically do a summer workshop and we often host that. But the, the youth art team plans and presents that and they add additional expanse each year. They were not able to do that this last year due to COVID, but they do plan to, to pick that up again.
Okay, okay. And then the last thing, the question I have is the amphitheater hood. And my concern has been that things, rather than doing preventive maintenance, things get so bad that you have to redo the whole thing. Is there preventive maintenance to take care of the hood that covers the amphitheater stage?
There is not really preventive maintenance. We do monitor the condition and it has held up incredibly well. There has been more issues with the technology than the, the structure there. You know, with the, the lights and sound components at, at the amphitheater than, than the canopy. We've been very impressed with kind of the way that has held up. And in fact, that's one of the reasons that we're looking at, at that as a model for the, a, a new entrance feature as well.
Okay, and a final thing to that is that the trail that goes right next to, right behind the Center through the arts and goes up to, what is that street? Is that Mullen or First Street? Whatever the street is there, where you got that bend there. Can you make a point of ensuring that they will put railing there so that we don't have people running into the river that come around that?
Well, that, that probably is outside of my department, however. And I would also point out that it's, it was always pointed out to me that that is not considered a bike trail. That is a walking trail. And, and just for that reason, it was not designed as, as a bike trail there. And there is no, there's no outlet either once you hit the, the amphitheater. So it doesn't continue on.
Having written on that, I, I know that, that when you come off the River Road Trail, there's a path that you can go down and it takes you down there. And so if you're bicyclists and want to go up into Waterloo that way, I know I have and several of the bicyclists that I know that use that. And then you go down and you go behind and you come back up and then you go come out on Park Avenue. So it just would be great for safety purposes so that we don't have some kind of tragedy occur that maybe you could just exert your influence to get those railings put up there. Right, Mr. Mayor?
I would certainly support anything to make it safer. And, and I, 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 I well, I'm well aware that people use it as a bike trail. They often will ride right through our musical performances.
Right. I think we, Mr. Bowles has a quick question before we close.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. And, and I did address railing with in the past. Still the same thing from Mr. Kneuzen, suggesting railing, not a bike trail, but having written on it, it's, I think it's kind of dangerous. Do you anticipate any problems when the parking lot is complete dealing with the lack of parking for art block projects?
I, I don't really, I, I really don't anticipate problems specifically with that. As I mentioned, and I apologize, I don't have, I can pull those, I don't have the figures with me. But between some of the changes that have been made in the streets and already in the parking areas there with the increased parking, just a few years ago, the overflow parking, which is, it's located right across Commercial Street, was significantly smaller than that. It was in very poor condition and there was, there were some buildings, unoccupied buildings that took up a, a good portion of that lot there that were in place. Those were demolished. That lot was repaved. The Sportsplex, originally when that was striped, they had extremely wide spaces. So that was restriped to increase capacity greatly. The changes that we are making to our parking lot are going to result in a significant increase in parking capacity as well. So I believe those things will more than compensate for any additional parking associated with the art block building.
What would be your total number of parking spaces?
Again, I apologize. I don't have that information with me. But I'd be happy to do that.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Kent, for all your work you do. And just being an incredible leader to this pandemic and making sure that you can have as much accessible to people as possible. So you have multi-functions from the amphitheater to the Expo Plaza to your art displays and managing the center. And you seem to always get it done. So we thank you so much for all of your efforts. Good sir.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Which we made with second, all in favor.
Aye.
We adjourn.